Yeah, and then it has the arrows.
Right now, the spaces between versus the volume.
Yeah.
And I was like, oh.
Yeah, I did get it.
All right. So I would like to call to order the continuation of a regular meeting of April 25th, 2019, which was continued to today, Tuesday, May 14th, 2019. So can we please get a roll call?
Commissioner Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioner Hidalgo?
Here.
Commissioner Keller?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Vice Chair Juárez?
Here.
Chair Barrera?
Here.
All seven commissioners are present.
Okay. So the first and only item is Old Business, which was the reconsideration of the Marketplace Redevelopment Project for Parcel B. So we're going to have a short staff presentation on that.
Thank you, Chair Barrera. This is really just a reminder of where we all are for the benefit of the commission and the public and members of the audience, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. The Planning Commission approved this project, Marketplace Redevelopment Project Parcel B, on January 24th, 2019. Commissioner Young and Vice Chair Juárez had excused absences from that meeting. Wareham Development then filed an appeal on February 8th, 2019. On March 19th, 2019, the City Council considered the appeal, and they remanded the item back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration with direction to hold a new public hearing and to consider the issues that were raised in the Wareham Appeal Letter. On April 25th, 2019, at approximately 4:30 PM, Wareham delivered to city offices and emailed to the Planning Commissioners a letter dated April 24th, 2019, and plans dated April 25th, 2019. The letter raised additional concerns about the project, and the plans provided alternatives for the design of the project. On April 25th, 2019, at 6:30 PM, the Planning Commission held a public hearing at a regular meeting to reconsider the project as directed, to reconsider the project as directed by the City Council. After taking public testimony, the public hearing was closed at the April 25th meeting. Commissioner Thompson had an excused absent from that meeting. At the April 25th meeting, following the public hearing, the commission voted to continue the item to tonight, May 14th, 2019, at 6:30 PM, in the City Council chambers, to allow the commissioners to consider the additional information submitted by Wareham on April 25th and the additional evidence submitted at the public hearing, and to allow staff to revise the resolution to address this additional evidence. On May 13th, 2019, yesterday, CCRP, the applicant, submitted a wind tunnel analysis of the project that they had had prepared. This was emailed to staff and the commission. Staff forwarded this email and the attached wind tunnel study to Wareham. The purpose of tonight's meeting is for the commission to deliberate and vote on the project, having now had time to reconsider all of the evidence submitted and the revised resolution. Staff has modified the resolution to address the April 25th submittal from Wareham. In your packets is a brief memo explaining the situation, the revised resolution, and the proposed conditions of approval, reflecting the modifications that had previously been made by the commission at your original approval of the project on January 24th, 2019. Staff understands that Commissioner Young and Vice Chair Juárez have viewed the video of the April 24th, 2019 meeting, and that Commissioner Thompson has viewed the video and materials presented at the April 25th, 2019 meeting, so that they are eligible to participate in tonight's deliberations. And at this time, I would like to ask those three commissioners to please confirm that you have, in fact, viewed those videos?
Yes, I have.
Yes, I have.
Yes. Thank you. If you wish to consider the information that was submitted yesterday by CCRP in your deliberations, then you should reopen the public hearing and allow for new testimony, limited to three minutes per speaker. That concludes my remarks, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? No? All right. So I would like to reopen the public hearing so that we can consider the CCRP wind tunnel analysis in the record. So if anybody wants to speak, I am going to open up the public hearing, and you have three minutes. So if there is anybody that wishes to speak tonight, now is the time.
I'm Jeff Sears with Wareham Development. We were sent a copy yesterday. You had advised us there were not going to be a public hearing tonight, so we didn't come prepared to speak to that. We didn't figure it would be part of the consideration this evening, so we're frankly unprepared because we didn't see that this was noticed as a public meeting, and that's all I can say right now.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight? No? All right. I'm closing the public hearing and opening it up for commissioner deliberation, and I would like to start with Commissioner Keller, since you have something that you'd like to be put up.
That'll come a little later.
Okay.
So because of the amount of information we had to consider and the seriousness of this, it's a little lacking in personal, but I am going to read a prepared statement that I've been working on for this. So Director Brandt did a good job, but I still have to start by reiterating the directive given to the commission by the City Council, and it quotes, "Planning Commission review of the FDP is limited to the issues raised in the Wareham letter only." I'm not sure how that impacts the information received on the meeting of April 25th or yesterday. But first, I'd like to make everyone aware that, according to their website, Wareham Development is a real estate development and property management company that has been in business since 1977. That's 42 years. I make this point to illustrate the fact that they know the ins and outs of development, especially in Emeryville, down to a gnat's eyebrow. With that in mind, we need to see in their letter of their appeal letter that they compared this current development project proposal to the 2008 preliminary development plan, or we know as a PDP. And thus, they know that the 2008 PDP was primarily, primary by design, that in its very nature, the PDP was subject to adjustments and modifications as the entire project developed over the years. Adjustments and modifications that take place in this exact process. So just that I'm clear, I'm doing my due diligence as a planning commissioner. I will address each aspect in Wareham's first appeal letter. Starting with Page 1, Paragraph 2, the statement that, the statement of negatively impacting quality of life. I feel that empty lots, surface parking lots and empty storefronts are a serious detriment to our quality of life. This project, as before us, continues the intention of the 2008 PDP while providing our best chance in today's economy of supporting existing businesses in the public market, while creating the interest draw and excitement to attract new retail and food services in the public market and the greater neighborhood. Everything about the public market, including Parcel B project, improves the pedestrian experience and the aesthetics of Emeryville. I'm astonished that Wareham, being the developer that they are, somehow missed the new benefits, so I'll list them. On the subject of transit, we have new bus stops with shelters, new AC transit routes such as the 29 and the 36. For cycling, there are new green bike lanes, new bike racks, and the addition of bike share. In open space, we've added nearly a half acre to Christie Park, and for the pedestrians, sidewalk stop signs to slow traffic and several new cross, several new crosswalks, all which greatly, greatly contribute to the improved quality of life. In Paragraph 3, the appeal letter suggests vastly diminished space between the buildings, when in fact, the reduction of space between the buildings in the 2008 PDP and the current proposal is only eight feet. In the 2008 PDP, the gap was 76 feet. The current plan has 68 feet. The location of the gap has shifted to the south of the 2008 PDP. I'm sure the reference Wareham was making is a difference of this proposal and the 2016 proposal, though they didn't clarify. But even so, even, but even so, that plan was in 2016, and like the 2000, and like the PDP of 2008, alterations and changes are allowed through this exact process. Now, in their second letter, Wareham states in Paragraph 8 that the previous 2016 FDP is pertinent, and I'll tell you why it's not. The approval of that FDP in no way obligates City Center nor the City of Emory to develop that plan. Again, by the nature of their design, PDPs are, are subject to alteration and change allowed by this public process. So back to the first letter. In Paragraph 4, the first bullet point regarding creating a visual streetscape that enhances the pedestrian experience, avoid blank walls or box-like forms. To that, I could say with conviction that storefronts with large swaths of dimensional artwork do not create such a feared experience or environment. As I detailed in our previous commission meeting, I clearly illustrated how this particular architectural style echoes the established architectural vernacular of Emeryville in the Emery Tech Building on 65th Street. That vernacular also can be seen in the Vessler Building along 40th Street and the original Sherman William Building on Horton. In response to the second paragraph, in response to comments in the second paragraph, I'd like to place a map on the overhead. I have one here, Charlie, for you. Here, Wareham asserts that, and I quote, "The latest plan for Parcel B diminishes the space separation between buildings. This map shows an area of Parcel B, the Parcel B project, and eight of Wareham's properties within the same area." On the map, you'll see boxes outlined in yellow that show the space between buildings. Within the boxes, there are white arrows illustrating the distance between the buildings. The distances were gathered from Google Maps and may be approximate. According to the plans in our packet, the new building on Parcel B and the existing marketplace tower are 65 feet apart, which is about 10 feet further apart than the Emeryville Station North and the new Emeryville Station West building. The map also shows the new building on Parcel B will have the greatest distance separating it from Emery Station West than any distance within Emeryville's buildings or its neighbors. Moving on to the wind, I feel the issue has been fully addressed in the report study and agree with the, that the wind will not be an issue. Contrary to Wareham's assertion, the proposed buildings will not adversely affect the area by greatly increasing wind. Item number four, in the, in the TDM, has been addressed with wider sidewalks, additional crosswalks, new stop signs, green bike lanes, the bike share pod, bike racks, the new bus shelters, and new bus routes. Traffic was addressed in the Kimberley Horn Report, showing less impacts than the 2008 EIR and PDP. In the second letter, Wareham continues to stress that the approved FDP shall substantially conform to the PDP, which I can say with confidence, this current proposal closely conforms, more closely conforms to the 2008 PDP than the 2016 proposal. Their proposal is not substantially or significantly different than the proposed, the approved PDP. Thus, it does not require council approval or an amendment of the EIR. And lastly, referring to item five, the tower separation has been made abundantly clear that it is a moot point. I believe that along with the Emeryville City staff responses, I have completely and fully addressed the points of Wareham's appeal letter and should clear, and clearly remove any doubt that we should once again approve this project without further delay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hidalgo, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I will not have nearly as much.
Thank God.
So in addressing the initial appeal letter, a lot of the same points I agree with, just to kind of touch on a few of them, primarily with the appellant's idea that Article 2E was somehow violated by breaking up a form and creating this visual wall. The proposed building went through a planning session with the planning commission. We all agreed in that planning session, and it went to City Council, on advice that this wasn't a visual wall, that they were going to create art, it was going to create a sense of place. So I don't find that to be a reasonable argument. In terms of wind, the data provided to us was just essentially percentage points in the packets that at least I was provided. There was no formal wind study, there was no background data, so I cannot conclude, per the appellant's letter, that there was an actual significant impact, whereas the proposed project had an EIR. They provided wind data that, to me, meets the substantial evidence argument. The TDM was prepared for the project, and the other items, staff cleared up in their report, that these items had been prepared and that there was some confusion on the appellant's side that they were not available. So I again also recommend that we reapprove.
I'll make mine short and sweet also. The, just addressing the points here, I don't believe that this proposed design negatively impacts the neighborhood pedestrian experience. I believe that it'll improve our experience as a neighborhood, and we, with the examples that Commissioner Keller pointed out, I'm excited to see what, see this move forward. The, the PDP is subject to alter, case, alter, alterations, the design, in terms of the building itself, we gave thorough feedback about the design, and we're able to see some elements that would be applied to the building that we're really excited about, and believe that the different sides of the buildings do not favor one or the other. In fact, the Planning Commission, on multiple occasions, recommended that the building facing, the, where the building actually be adjusted so that we, it did look visually appealing. So that's something that we definitely considered early on. The, the wind, which has been the largest factor here, we have a study that shows that the wind is not impacted heavily through this design, and so I agree with those findings. And the tower separation is not something that really applies to this building with the changes that are being considered in the future. And so I, along with my fellow commissioners, would like to see this move forward and move on with this. Thanks.
Commissioner Donaldson, would you like to go next?
I would agree with the statements of the previous commissioners. I think that we looked at the building carefully, and while I had some comments about the loss of a little bit of public space on the south end of the building, generally, the building was received well. And I have recently spent some time in the Arts District in Los Angeles, which is a transitioning industrial area that has a lot of really large buildings with really blank walls, and they've done some incredible art there, and it's a pleasure to wander around there and discover these things. So I would hope that the art that we're going to get on all sides of, both sides of the building, and the treatments on the north and south side will also be a contribution to the neighborhood and make it more exciting and more interesting. I also, in looking at the appellant's submittal, Attachment A on Parcel B, comparing the TMG massing in 2008 to the City Center version, it looks to me like the previous, the 2008 PDP has a big wall towering over the, the Transit Center Building and significantly blocking light and, and air to the public space on the south side of the building, whereas the City Center version leaves the public space on the south side of the Wareham Building much more open and does have a gap and obstructs less of the view that the building, the Wareham Building has. So I would, I would be in favor of approving, reapproving this.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Sure. Yeah, I think in terms of the first finding around the requirements for AES-1, I did want to draw attention to our design guidelines, in the sense that they do discuss building massing in detail, and we do talk as a community about making sure that buildings step back at the upper levels, that they show changes in height and massing, that you create building openings for mid-block pedestrian connections, and a variety of other massing-related elements. So I did just want to note that we have articulated that relative to design, and I do find that this is a large building, certainly, does not mass back at the top. That being said, this was created in, you know, 2010. This is something that we consider as we go through, and we are not bound by. And I believe that the process that we have gone through in terms of having a study session and having significant discussion about it, discussing public art, that that has been in the same intent as pure massing. In addition, in terms of the article citation, I find, although this is a good point, I don't find it as substantive in terms of the decision-making, and that, that I, in terms of it, you know, outweighing the, the discussions that we had and the process that we went through. So I did just wanted to note that. In terms of the wind, I think I agree principally with the other commissioner comments about the evidence that has been prepared as being sufficient, and in terms of not feeling as though there is a reduction in quality or, or an amplification of the wind characteristics that would make this project infeasible. I too looked at the traffic elements and agree that the reduction of, or the program change has actually resulted in an expected lower degree of impact, so that I don't under, don't see this as a substantive argument. And then I agree also with my fellow commissioners that the tower separation does not apply in this case.
Commissioner Young?
I took the, I took a kind of a little different look at it. I took at the, the appeal look at the design in terms of taking the building a level underground and trying to build this parking garage next to a railroad track, and then at the same time, trying to look at this tall building that's next to the terraces, which I think this, this 2008 version would have this tower that sticks out, and I know everybody on that kind of north, northwest corner would just have this building in front of them. My, the building is beautiful, so it really has, it's kind of nay or say. I also took that, I took a look at the terrace scene of the massing of the building as well, how it might be able to step up to maybe involve some porches or some balconies there that could offer some views that might do that. But then you would, in order to regain that space, it seems like the cost is, is intense. But I looked at it pretty deeply, and I just kind of thought, well, I, and also was taken by this other, this other comment, you know, what the building was a box. I remember when I approved it, I was extremely ecstatic about the design. I think the design really reads Emeryville. I think it, I think it, you look at this building here, and you look at all the buildings that are around us, and it really has this, this really warm, kind of inviting feeling to it, and I really just think the, the concept of the art. Now, I'm like with the, all the other commissioners as well, as in terms of how this building, but I, I understand the, maybe the, the gap, the gap being narrowed, or, and how we're kind of looking at maybe cutting off views, but it, it's, I'm kind of torn, but I, I think that what we're doing is, is good, the way it's, it's the way we're presenting it now. I can't imagine it going another direction unless there's somehow a huge amount of funds that are going to be able to pull this off to make the underground parking work and lower the building a couple layers into this, into the soil. So that's how I feel.
Okay. Thank you very much. So the remand from the City Council was to consider the issues raised in the appeal, so I'm going to keep my comments solely related to the issues that were raised in the appeal. So the first one related to the condition of approval to create a vital streetscape that enhances the pedestrian experience and avoid blank walls or box-like forms. The reason that I believe that this project meets this requirement is because there are buried building materials at the ground floor commercial level, including the bulkhead with a type of siding that's different than the materials on the rest of the wall. There is articulation on the ground floor with the storefront window systems that are recessed from the vertical columns that separate the spaces. The window storefront systems provide a deep reveal, and the grids in the transoms above the, the storefront system add, add interest. The linear elevations of the building, although it is very large, as you point out in your letter, that's approximately 500 feet, is broken up by, by the prominent entrance in the middle. So I think that the pedestrian experience is very rich and, and very interesting and satisfies this condition, and although the overall building design is rectangular or box-like in form, it definitely has enough articulation and, sorry, enough architectural detail, both on the pedestrian level and throughout the entire building, and coupled with the art that's proposed, I, I do think that this design meets not just this condition of approval, but the rest of the conditions of approval related to design in the original PDP. The second point related to the wind, the wind study requirement in the EIR, which is related to usable roof areas and the bridge that's part of Parcel A. I believe this is a moot point because Parcel B doesn't have any, any usable roof areas, and we are not considering Parcel A. The next point related to the gap between the buildings as it relates to wind, 68 feet of separation between buildings is not a narrow gap, as Commissioner Keller's analysis shows, the gap, the separation between Parcel A and Parcel B will fit perfectly into the context of Emeryville, and it's in substantial compliance with the 76 feet that was analyzed as part of the PDP, with only an eight-foot difference. The next one related to the TDM plan, as the staff report pointed out, there was a TDM plan that was prepared and updated in 2017, and it was specifically for Parcel And the Kimberley Horn Traffic Consultant also confirmed that the trip generation wouldn't exceed that which was analyzed as part of the PDP, and so this project is in compliance in respect to traffic generation as well. And on the last point of the tower separation, as you probably already know, and, you know, we've kind of mentioned this already, one of the purposes of having an approved PUD or, or PDP that kind of outlines the general massing is to ensure that the development standards that were in place when the PUD and PDP was approved will remain for the life of the project, especially for these big projects that are phased, in an effort to have the developer be able to adequately plan for phasing these large-scale projects. So it's, it's very clear that the 100-foot tower separation doesn't apply in this case. So with that, and in reading all of the material and going back to the conditions of approval and the PDP, I find that this project is in substantial compliance with the previously approved PDP, and, and I agree with my fellow commissioners that we should move forward to approve the FDP. So with that said, can I get a motion from anybody?
I'd be happy to make the motion that we approve the resolution and this project going forward.
Second. On the motion, the motion was by Commissioner Keller and seconded by Vice Chair Juárez. Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hidalgo?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Vice Chair Juárez?
Aye.
Chair Barrera?
Aye.
Seven ayes. The application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Thank you. So this is the end of the public hea, or no. So this is the end of the public hea -- or no, of the meeting.
This is the end of the April 25th meeting.
The end of the April 25th meeting on May 14th. Thank you.
Rejoining the meeting?
Yes, that was in adjournment.